Roads and I just wanted to hear your counsel and the public to understand how that works. And those who don't know, we typically don't plow until there's at least four inches of snow on the ground. Before that, we'll salt and sand. In either case, whether we're salting and sanding or plowing, there are what we call our red and green roots that are the main arteries of the town. It does include some county roads. And we address those roads first. They're the main roads that help connect people from different parts of the town to other different parts of the town. Once the red and green roots are complete, the guys go back in teams, usually two or three trucks, to different neighborhoods and they knock out those neighborhoods. Unfortunately, the last roads to get done are usually the cul-de-sacs because they're not throughies. They're cul-de-sacs, they're dead ends, and they're the last ones to get done. And it's difficult for some people to understand that. And it's not that the township has chosen to ignore them till the end. It's just a matter of process from start to finish to get the work done. So I want to make sure everybody understood that part of it.
Okay.
Another issue that we've had is, and it came up especially last week when we had the heavy slushy snow, is the Public Works Department plows from curb to curb, trying to get the entire width of the road plowed. And although there are certain things that can keep that from happening, cars parked in the street, other debris, potentially in the street, but other than that, the trucks plow curb to curb. And especially when the snow is heavy like it was last week. And I don't, when I say heavy, I mean actual weight, not necessarily depth. Because we could have eight inches of fluffy snow and it's not as hard to plow. But the trucks have to move at a certain speed to physically be able to push the snow off the road. What happened last week was that through that process, pushing the heavy snow, sidewalks in town were plowed back over and in some cases after residents had already shoveled themselves out.
Okay.
And there were some complaints about that. Unfortunately, the township does not and really cannot go back and shovel out private sidewalks. What, there's been some internal discussions about, we discussed it a little bit with the mayor and with the solicitor, is if there's some way that we could help facilitate some type of process where we connect people who are willing to help their neighbors with neighbors who need the help. Whether they're senior citizens, disabled, there's certain neighbors of ours, residents in town, that have a more difficult time in dealing with snow removal than others. I know that Chris and Phil helped somebody out this past weekend. And we probably all at times helped a neighbor, whether they were away or snowball wasn't working, whatever the circumstances are. Talked to Tony a little bit about the liability of the town doing something like that. Some of the feedback I've received on it is, is that something the township would actually want to do? Or is that something we'd want to see if we can get some type of volunteer organization to help out with? And essentially, it would be, you know, somebody, whether it's us or another organization, would serve as a conduit to, like I said, put together those that can help with those that need help.
Right.
I think a great place to even start with that would be the Interact Club here in the high school. And getting people to, you know, maybe somehow through our website, create something that, you know, you can contact and have a contact number for Interact. And then they can maybe coordinate something with the high school students. Or maybe it's something too that, I know there's always people scouts looking for different fathers. That could be something that can be coordinated and have it every year where it's, you know, if you are disabled or elderly, you can call in and have, you know, we can have a list of people who need the help and then send it to volunteers and they can go out and help out. I mean, it'd be...
As far as the community organization, I think we went up the alley, if you will, with Siddleway. Because they may be able to coordinate with them.
I mean, you could even reach out to like the Roverys and the Lions Club or something like that. But I think, I mean, it's another way of, we're certainly helping each other out. And I think, you know, that's what our town's all about, so I wanted to maybe help facilitate that to get that along. I mean, last year, you didn't have to think about it because we didn't have, you know, we didn't have much. But then this year, it's been a little overwhelming. So maybe that's something we could look into.
Well, yeah, what I was thinking was, our rec department has a lot of great experience in working with volunteers, many volunteers together, to have Theresa Miller work with me to help identify who can help us and maybe put something together.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
I would like to work on that as well if the council would object.
Sure.
Craig?
I hear people are going to raise this.
Yeah.
Random acts of, we're going to need those random acts of kindness on Thursday.
Yeah. The last topic in terms of...
Scott, before we leave the snow...
Oh, I wasn't leaving the snow. As much as I'd love to.
Yeah.
But go ahead, Eric.
It just happened by Memorial Field today. And as I was going, I saw this poor Public Works guy who was trying to shovel hard snow. Which I understand from a very good friend of mine, Mr. Garwood, Mr. Chata, also had that fun experience by a friend of mine. But Mr. Garwood Chata may not own a snow blower, but I was wondering, does the town own snow blowers? Which would make it, you know, cost effective, labor effective. I just recently bought one for another organization with like $900 for a tour. Is it possible that we could, if they don't own it, look into that? Because it would be, I think, a good tool for us to have, considering particularly the fact that we have New Cap Hall.
Yeah, and I believe we do have a snow blower. I don't know how many, but you're right, Craig, especially one for the new site. You know, the sidewalk, it serves as the perimeter of the entire site, plus the interior walkways. It's served, it'd be more than we want for a couple guys with shovels.
Yeah, I was feeling it when that guy's back.
Yes, you should show up mine too. Let me ask you, did you all notice the letters on the wall?
Well, are we ready to address that?
Well, why don't we get through the discussion?
It's a good thing the letters on the wall are there.
Are we ready to address that?
Yes, I think we are.
Okay.
Are that the final letters, the ones on the wall?
Yes, they are.
And somebody did they paint them white as the other ones were?
Uh...
They do not really blend from an aesthetic point, in my humble opinion, with the brick wall.
Yes, that was the plan to paint them, but after the weather breaks.
Why weren't you put white?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, as long as you're gonna end up white, then that's where we want to go.
You're all right. Okay, you like the snow.
All right, to go back to the discussion, there is one other very important issue pertaining to our snow removal. And I hopefully will be meeting, if not later this week, early next week, with the transportation supervisor for the school district. As an aside, I am trying to get together a meeting with our superintendent, Mr. Tim Rem, but I'm sure he's got plenty to do as he walks in the door. But I have communicated with Lynn Sugars about concerns we have in dealing with bus stops. A lot of skilled kids in the town take the bus, my two kids take the bus every day. And the concern is that while the township is clearing the roads and it's the property owner's responsibility to clear the sidewalks, there are sometimes issues depending on where Public Works, especially with bus stops, say, being on a corner. Public Works is pushing the snow, say, onto a corner, you know, the children having to sort of climb over that to get into the street to get into the bus. So I'm gonna meet with representative for Public Works and the school transportation supervisor and to really go over the whole issue, both from the school standpoint and ours, to see if there's anything that we can do with working with the school district to make sure that the passageway from the bus stop to the bus is as safe and unencumbered as possible.
With respect to that, also in another organization I'm involved with, I'm sure you can go out and see this in the wall. They have little fluorescent poles that you can put in. I don't know how you do that on bus stops, but the little poles indicate where nobody should plow. And this is really put in for curbs, but it's just a thought in your discussion. I don't know how you get there to that point. Who would put the poles up, that kind of thing? Would the neighbors would do it? I have no idea. But in regards to the poor guys who are doing the plowing and the people also who need to be at the bus stop, something like that, where marking where this snow should not be is...
Well, I mean, the bottom line, and I've encouraged this before and it's an open invitation for any council that wants to ride with one of the guys as they plow it, to see firsthand what the experience is like. The snow has to go somewhere. And, you know, some of these guys are working at times 16 hours straight, you know, and depending on the depth and the weight of the snow. You have situations where people put their car out so their driveway doesn't get plowed in or, you know, some other way to sort of get in the way. And my thought in terms of ease, and I don't know, this is one of the reasons why we need to meet with the people from the school district, if the bus stops can, at least after a snow event, if they have to shift several feet one way or another to go to where a driveway is instead of a corner that's been plowed in. In theory, the driveways will all have been shoveled back out so people can have ingress and egress into their own driveway. But, you know, I don't know, as I sit here, and this is one of the things we're gonna discuss with school district, how many bus stops in town there are that we're dealing with. And that's the problem. And the problem with really all of this stuff is the amount of work that's involved here. And that's one of the reasons why we don't go back and shovel out sidewalks. So I will give counsel and the public, in attendance, at the next meeting, a follow-up to all of this.
There is a question, let me interrupt. Mr. Charles, are our employees allowed to shovel sidewalks?
Private sidewalks.
Well, sidewalks.
Allowed to, the ordinance provides that clearing the sidewalk is a responsibility of the public. So to say allowed to is really not the issue. The issue is there's not enough people to go around, public employees to go around and shovel sidewalks. They just aren't.
That part I get, but are they lawfully, is there some prohibition to them doing it?
Or legally bound for them?
On a liability standpoint, is there something you can think of, you know?
Yeah, there could always be an issue. There's a concern.
Now, Scott, I was wondering if by any chance this would be an opportunity to find out how other people are dealing with keeping bus stops cleared in other towns. Not, I was gonna say shared services, but best practices.
I have, you guys looking to that as well, Greg? And the feedback that I've received has been pretty much, there's just not enough resources to clear that much snow and the kids just walk through the snow to get to the bus stop. Does anybody else wanna come up with a snow removal? As we have a storm pending for Wednesday. I have eight inches.
Can I, can I hurry?
All right, the next thing that's on the workshop agenda that we discussed last week is scheduling a budget workshop. And Tom has been working diligently over the last several weeks, not months, to get ready for council and me and him to discuss this at length and the depth. And we are ready to have that discussion. Talking to at least a couple of you earlier, we typically have had budget workshops early to 8:00, 8:30 in the morning. I've been told by a couple council members that Thursday mornings are difficult. So I wanted to see if everybody was available for a week from Wednesday. That is...
8:30.
At 8:30 and, Tom, is that enough time for you to do anything to add? I personally don't have anything to add. Okay. No, we are appointing, it's somewhere on the agenda, we are appointing Neil Johnson back to the appearance committee.
Yes, thank you.
I spoke to him today and he's ready, willing, and able to proceed. So that fills, I think that leaves one remaining opening.
Yeah, we have that discussion if you want. This is a council committee, there's one alternancy.
Okay, so there's one alternancy left on the appearance committee?
I don't think, I have to talk with the chair of appearance now, I think we're ready. We want to get her recommendation. And it's a recommendation, she was...
Okay. What he said was, is he's talked to the chair and she's not ready to give a recommendation for that.
Hi, I was gonna ask one question. Is there a way when we get our grids, because I think there was confusion with us filling it out?
Yes.
Is there a way just to say what seats need to be filled? Because it was like, the way we get it, it says, you know, this person's filling this on an expired term, but then it has a person's name in there and it moves up to the second place, you know, everything's kind of shifting on it. Is there a way to just say, "Appearance committee has three vacant seats, you know, two alternates and a regular seat", so that we don't have, like, so that confusion's not there? I think that's what...
Wait, redo it, the grid and the matrix, just to make it nice and...
I can work with you.
You are?
Okay, because I think, because I think it unfortunate...
Yeah, I think it was too.
Cost effective, what happened?
I would like a giant on that, yes.
Because it just seemed like, I thought we had everything filled and then obviously we didn't reappoint Neil and that I think was supposed to be there, but it just didn't happen because the way the grid was set up, so...
If I could just even add to that, when somebody puts in a citizen form, they often finds, say, "I'm interested in playing" or "I'm interested in X committee". If we knew that as well...
Well, that's on there.
But as a separate list...
That's a separate list?
As a separate list, then we would much easier to see who's interested.
I guess it's confusing.
We'd just like to make more work for you, Patty.
We used to do a lot of separate lists, but then that became...
Too many?
Because everybody...
Well, it's gonna be okay, I can kind of work with Patty.
Yeah, it'd make you less confused.
Well, the deputy mayor wants to work with Patty in the trial court. A streamlined, that'd be great. We have a year, so we should be able to...
Thanks, Patty, I appreciate that.
Okay, so now we're moving out of our, are we, do we have a workshop?
I don't have anything else on the agenda. We did discuss it last meeting, that I would use the workshop as, to, you know, basically also provide my manager's report.
Okay.
It's council. See, there's Mr. Notley and Mr. Reagan are not in attendance. Nothing really report with the town hall library project. And other than dealing with budget issues and snow removal issues, really nothing much else to tell today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I hear from Scott, Scott, you remember I gave you a list of 11 meetings for official discussions?
Yes.
And it just occurs to me that four of them seem to be pretty pertinent if we could get the budget discussions on revenue building and cost reduction, current and future budget for maintenance of buildings and grounds and so forth, status of locations of court, police department, discussions, specific recommendations for stamping. Not to go over all of them, but is there, could we look over that list again and see if we can get, you know, one of these on the...
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate it.
I mean, a couple of those things are probably issues we'll discuss during the budget workshops. Especially maintenance of buildings and grounds, but certainly, you and I can touch base before next week.
If you're free, call me to discuss anything you want to... Okay, let's move into discussion items. Discussion regarding schedule matters. Do you think we have a schedule issue? No, I think so. Okay. And, do we have any amendments to the agenda? Reports from member of council. Let's start with Councilwoman Napolitano.
Hi. One thing I wanted to report today was that over the weekend, some of members of council, we had the opportunity to go to the grand opening of Aunt Salma's, the candy shop on Main Street. I had a great discussion with Pam Morris, who's the proprietor. She has great plans for the business. She really wants to get involved in community events and, you know, I think it's gonna be a great addition to Main Street. And I definitely know I'll be going back for their hand-dipped chocolate covered strawberries, which she said they'll be starting to do soon. That's it.
Great. Attorney Mayor Jordan?
Just wanted to reiterate, went to Aunt Salma's yesterday, it was wonderful, wonderful event, great addition to Main Street, and we're happy to go there. Also, we had an EDAC meeting. Greg Gallo was appointed the chair and Pete Paco was appointed vice chair. And we are tackling the issue of our parking meters up on Main Street. So they're going over, getting some information. Director Johnson had given us a survey that he sent out to the business owners and they will be getting back to us with their recommendation.
Great, thank you. Ultimate newcomer.
Yeah, I would say in attendance to the same EDAC meeting, and I thought it was great. We were able to discuss a lot of new things. For instance, our new adventure at town hall with the possible coffee shop, if you will, which I think they like, and a lot of other things. EDAC is very, very active in so many ways in the business of town. I wondered if this was the correct time, but I wanted to ask if Mr. Michelle has received our $500 credit or $500, because Victoria Palopano and I both attended a JIF meeting in the beginning of the year. We're supposed to get a credit for that from JIF. And I wanted to see if, if he hasn't, and check on...
Yeah, I'll be checking.
And also in the same thing, figure out when we could have the JIF...
Well, I agree.
That's all I have.
Okay, me. I also went to Aunt Salma's and it was delicious. I'd definitely recommend everybody go. Last week, there was the Citizen of the Year dinner, which was a great privilege to go. We celebrated and honored Will Merrican, and one of my area brothers proclamation. Just a great citizen, somebody who really understands what community spirit is about. Thirty years of donating his own time to better our town, helped launch the lacrosse club, and just a wonderful man. It was a great, great time, a great honor to be asked to participate in that. Then we also had the RAC advisory committee meeting and nothing reported that we're just working on the agenda for RAC for this year, which should be a big year for RAC. And that's it. Upcoming meetings right here in the IT room, February 24th, 2014, 7:30 PM. Actually, before that though, don't forget, at February 19th, 2014, in the conference room of the town hall will be a budget workshop that's at 8:30 AM. And then February 24th, 2014, 7:30 PM here for a regular meeting. And then March 10th, 2014, 7:30 PM, an official action meeting. Agenda updates, does anybody, I think we already covered agenda updates, someone out of order, okay. And now I need a motion to adopt the consent, I need a motion to adopt resolution approving the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thanks.
On my favor?
Aye.
Presentations and proclamations. Park row up the floor. Ask Holly Myers to come forward. Holly?
Yes, please.
Will you put the microphone?
I will.
Privilege of presenting to you this proclamation. And this is for kindness, I'm gonna read it then. Kindness begins within each heart. A kind word, a soft touch, a smile to all we meet. Things we do for another reason than to allow ourselves, a blessing of helping and encouraging a friend, neighbor, or complete stranger. And one of our highest goals in words that is to build and maintain a welcoming community for all.
Shoveling snow.
Shoveling snow, yes. Turning back to prove it. Kindness in the form of enablingness, respect and calibre and collaboration produces a peaceful community in which we pause, we honor our values to self and one another spontaneously and voluntarily each day. And to nourish and advance this goal, we commit to achieving this through conscious acts of kindness, of rewards and deeds. We cultivate a community that fosters goodwill towards others, cares for its citizens, and daily and in a mind that defies each member. Now therefore, the Township Council of Towne of Moorestown, the County of Bronton, State of New Jersey, hereby proclaim the week of February 10th through February 16th as kindness week. And urge every citizen to perform an act of kindness towards a friend, a neighbor, to a complete stranger, perfectly complete stranger, and live their lives with keeping kindness with the kindness movement every day. It is really truly an honor to be with you, it's wonderful calls. And I know every year you're here for it, it is great fun. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I, um, thank you, Tom. You're on to service as photographer. I brought with me a book, gem of a book, it's called The Power of Kindness. And I have an invitation, an encouragement to anyone who's so moved to get a copy of this book or at the very least Google it, The Power of Kindness. And I have some special little...
Oh, yes.
...you know, so I can refer to it as that.
There you go. This is something council or...
Those are for all of you, and then I have other copies for anyone from the citizenry who would like a copy. But, so, this is the 19th proclamation, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Probably about eight different minutes.
Yes, I know.
For the play, kindness week here in Moorestown. And we know kind activity was taking place long before the Ren and the Kindness Foundation came up with this notion of having a designated week. And it, and the week itself helps to foster, you know, helps to remind us how really special it is to reach into our hearts and do kind things, like the shoveling and other things that have been referred to. We also know that there is unkind activity that takes place in this community. And I even do unkind things once in a while for heaven's sake, so imagine that, Greg. So to raise that consciousness, I have, and to step up, you know, I have a passion about this, but I recognize that there's more leadership that I could bring to it. In recent years, we've just kind of been blowing on the coals. Woo! There's agreement from the microphone about that, I think. And so with the 20th year coming up, I was thinking, ooh, what could we do? How can we raise some consciousness in the community? So there are 18 different aspects of kindness that are referred to in this book. And I was thinking, oh, maybe by July, we could have a community brainstorming session so that when we come into our 20th year, we're actually, we actually have a new level of consciousness. And I realized, ooh, there's about 18 weeks between now and then. Maybe I could take responsibility for taking each one of these topics and blogging in Moorestown and elsewhere about each of these, honesty, warmth, forgiveness, contact, sense of belonging, the things that are, that help to characterize kindness. So that's what I'm committing to. I'm gonna do that. And I invite all of you to, all of you who are moved to do so. It's just such a gem of a book, it contributes that anybody's like to read it. And so, so we'll see what emerges.
You're welcome.
So thank you for listening and for your support.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Lastly, as I mentioned, we have the Citizen of the Year proclamation for Will Merrican. Will was not here, but I did give him the proclamation last week and he was very grateful. He was gracious.
I was in attendance at that dinner as well. And Will gave a wonderful, wonderful address about the benefits to yourself about tourism and the end of his... Oh, it's really good.
Okay, now we move to the resident request and presentation portion. This is for residents to come up and make a request or a presentation. We ask that you make your request and probably sit down to give somebody else an opportunity. And please state your name and address for the record. Sir?
Mark Heinz, 130, Bridgeborough Road. Question, probably really for Scott. Concerning roads, on the corner of Fellowship Road and Church Street, there's been a bubbling, probably a water main break for the last few weeks. Are you aware of this and is this a township responsibility or would this be the state or county?
I am aware of it. Public Works has looked into it. Their feeling is that it's a groundwater issue. They contacted the county. So it's, to answer your question, it's not township responsibility, but obviously our guys will work with the proper authorities to see that it gets taken care of.
It's, you know, I did know it's township or not based on where it's at, but it is certainly hazardous because a lot of water's coming out. And with the, you know, single-digit weather we've been having, it's getting extremely hazardous. And I typically go by there about six in the morning and sometimes it's very scary.
Yeah, if we grab, I mean, one of the unfortunate side effects is whatever we're having.
Groundwater.
High.
I can see that.
And we have some places around town, whether there's some pump discharge or whether it's just literally just coming from the groundwater where water is just coming out as if, yeah, we've received a lot of phone calls in different areas telling people to state that there's broken pipes somewhere. Investigate it, but it's just being groundwater.
How long have you noticed the flooding, sir? I think since before Christmas.
Wow.
And there's a sign there saying a flooding or something. There's a warning sign, which is, you know, if it's about 32 degrees, it's a minor issue. But I've seen recently, last two or three weeks, basically a sheet of ice.
Wow, yeah, of course.
And if there haven't been accidents, that's been a miracle. So hardly needs to be somehow repaired. I don't know if it's groundwater, it'd be very difficult, but it probably needs extra attention just for.
I live on, thank you for pointing that out because it's become so common. I don't even see the comes there's.
The comes up pretty often.
I get it every morning.
Yeah.
So. So, thanks for pointing that out. It seems like I will always see the comes there.
Well, thanks for answering. I was kind of, it was unclear who to have responsibility for that, but we'll still have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other resident requests or presentations?
Sir?
Bob Glumman, 123 Augusta Drive. The Americans do memorial park the wall that was destroyed in the accident. I didn't get to see the letters today, but I've seen the brick wall that was redone. And it seemed very hazardous the way it was done for, for an insurance claim. Was there an insurance adjuster hired on that?
Uh, I'm sorry, Bob.
Was, was there an insurance adjuster hired with a wall?
Yeah, the adjuster was from the driver's insurance company.
Right, but why didn't we get the whole wall, like repart, what's the word, pointed as opposed to half a wall?
As opposed to infill. You're saying it was infill the wall.
Yes.
The bricks don't match.
Yep, exactly. I agree with you more. Thank you for agreeing with me.
I'll have to look into that.
Thanks.
Any other residents? Mail.
I don't know. I just have a statement to make. Is this where I'll do it?
Sure.
Okay.
You just need to be here in your address to record this.
All right. Pamela Keller, 622 Chester Avenue. And I'm just concerned about the priorities in this town. We are in the process of finishing a beautiful town hall. I can't imagine how much money that cost, even before when you were debating on even building it. And then there's the schools. Now, my father was born in Moorestown. My mother and father both went through the school system. My brothers and I went through the school system. My son went through the school system. And whether the graduation date was 1935, or 1968, or 1998, we were always guaranteed a quality education. Moorestown has always been one of the best school in Burlington County and one of the best schools in the state. But things are changing. Our Board of Education, at this point, has found itself $4 million in the hole. Which means that at the end of the year, there's going to be 30 or 40 staff members eliminated, programs eliminated, schedules, like the schedule in the middle school, which there just was an article in the paper, how Mount Laurel is instigating the schedule that we have been doing for years with all our special programs and our team time to help these kids at their most vulnerable age of seventh and eighth grade. That could be gone. Even though the, the school board was advised to budget to cap, which was 2% for the last four years, they didn't even come close. Last year was .4% that they budgeted. And they were living off their savings. And now they are $4 million in debt. And even if we got rid of all the sports in the town, that's only a million dollars. So there's going to be massive cuts in staff members, in programs. While all the schools around us are adding teachers, adding staff, adding programs. This is Moorestown. I mean, I, where are our priorities? A town hall or a quality school system? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that because you're from Moorestown. I'm one that moved in, one of the main reasons for the school district. Unfortunately, the town council has little, really nothing to do with, with the school budget.
Oh, I know.
And I would encourage you to go to a school board meeting and share those same exact feelings.
Oh, I do. And I talk there too. I just, the, the town needs to know. The parents need to know. The schools are far too important to let us just let them deteriorate.
Sure.
I mean, I, you know, and they have always been quality schools.
Yeah, they still are. And our schools are still our priority, as Mr. Prue was saying. It comes over the top of your school board, doesn't mean we don't follow it very closely. We all have kids. You know, when you see the different rankings and, and things that come out, our schools are always not just top of the county, but top of the state. So, but it's, you can, you asked, you prefaced your remarks by saying, literally our priorities, and schools were always a priority.
Yeah, I, I hope so. It's just, at, at the end, there, literally, at the end of the year, there's going to be 30 to 40 staff released and programs gone. And even schedules gone.
Thank you, Mr. Keller, for raising this concern. Mr. Keller was the future of both of my children's desires as well. She's well.
I had to one sign a trifecta, three grades, please.
Okay, any other residents that could come down?
Yeah, Lisa Betiello, 266 Main Street. I just wrote down some of my questions. It helps me, like my thoughts. Just a couple of questions about, just the sanitation thing again from the last meeting. Just a few process questions.
Sure, just one second.
Sure.
Fine, good, thank you.
Okay. First question is, during that meeting, there were a number of texts and emails, a phone call that came through that looked like it had to do with business. I'm just wondering, will the content of those text conversations, phone calls be part of public minutes? Or do they not need to be entered as part of the public discussion?
I don't think I know what you're talking about.
There were phone calls, a phone call came through at the last meeting on the town.
Do you mean councilwoman Appleton or your home?
No, 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 no. Between you, I think Mr. Dolez, maybe Mr. Carew, there was a phone call, a text message, emails, handheld devices, no?
I'm sorry, Larry, but yeah.
Does any? So, nobody got a text message, nobody got an email, nobody was talking on the telephone.
I actually got a text message from my son telling me something happened in the house.
Yeah, I don't know if there was a telephone call.
No, no, no. There was a conversation, you were leaning back and.
I got a soft like, I got a text message from my son.
No, that's.
I know the phone for Victoria was sitting right here between me and Phil. And that was.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe getting more towards it, maybe, I guess, I'm not entirely understanding what you're asking. We've said that there hasn't, that there weren't any conversations, so what specifically are I asking for?
I was just, that's what I said. I was wondering if the content of that would have been entered into the minutes, but I guess I must have been seeing things. I, I don't know, but.
Right, right.
No, but there were, there, there were devices going between you and Mr. Dolez and I think Mr. Carew as well.
I, I texted somebody in.
Okay.
I, I'm not revealing the content of that discussion.
That's my question. Are those?
I didn't have a, a text discussion with anyone on the council.
More the point would be whether, was there anything texted that was contextual in regard to this meeting?
That's a question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think there was any text.
Did anyone?
We're texting.
Has anybody intentionally done?
I might have texted my wife, but I, I don't think regarding the meeting, I don't think.
Okay, it's fine. There's contract, I guess, without sanitation that's somewhere. When will that, when does the contract go into effect?
Um, March 31st.
Okay. And then will that contract be, the contents of that contract be available for public to look at?
Sure.
And how will that be? Will that be on the township's website or do we have to come to Town Hall?
Where do we normally do it? Do we post it or is it?
Okay, so we'd have to go to get a copy from Patty.
I got it, yes.
Okay. And then the last thing, I noticed there's, there are some minutes on here that are going to be approved. And I know there was a third one that went up. So I just wanted to say, I know Patty is swamped with work up there. She's a hard worker. There's probably enough work for two of her out there. So thanks for, you know, making that a priority, getting that out there. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
In regards to Mr. Carew's question, is this fact sheet, Mr. Carew? Is this fact sheet?
One question I want.
Yep. So maybe we should.
We like that. But there is a fact sheet. Okay, I can look. There is a fact sheet regarding the sanitation. Can anybody be prepared to read it? Sir?
Good evening. Jack Lance, 302 East Main Street, Moorestown, New Jersey. Just, just to confirm, I, I was, I was here at the last meeting and there was a lot of text messaging going on, whatever was private or was part of the meeting. I guess what she's asking is, will that be public recorded if it was part of the meeting? So you're telling us there was nothing?
Mr. Lance, that was what the question was asked and it was already answered.
Okay, so there is nothing to confirm?
No.
Nothing, nothing to do with, okay. All right, that's fine. The other, the other question I did have, we had a gentleman, a young gentleman, I believe he came in towards November 18th meeting, 2013. Matter of fact, he did. He's a sophomore here at the high school. And he was asking about the skate park.
Yes, Jamie Allen.
Exactly. Have we reached out to him? Has anything happened with that skate park? Any ideas of where we're at?
No.
Yeah, after the meeting, I was glad to just talk to him. And it was very clear that he was going to do what he was going to do and then follow up with us.
So nobody's reached out to him? He's supposed to reach out to you or to council, I should say?
We, we, all the council members are not here tonight either. One of the council members may have reached out to him.
Right, that's how, and Patty just reminded, the, the instruction that was given that night was to put together a plan.
Correct.
Just no different than other private individuals, organizations have done to do projects that were done through private fundraising and volunteerism.
Okay.
And then go to a recreation advisory committee meeting. I, I don't know if Chris, if he's come to a meeting or not.
No, he has not.
But that would be the common way to go forward.
Absolutely. And I'm just curious, you know, I mean, has, has council taken any steps with any, there's nothing that's, I mean, as of right now, the park is just going to be empty space.
We don't have plans for it right now.
Okay. All right, so no plans. Okay. And then, and then the last, more or less statement I wanted to make was, November 25th, I expressed concerns about the sanitation issues. It's kind of a question in there as well. It was presented to me at that meeting that Mr. Carew, other members of management, council members advised, they will evaluate the proposals from various options and hope to make a recommendation at the December 16th council meeting. December 16th council meeting came and went, nothing on the agenda, January 6th, and it wasn't brought up again until it was finally on the agenda the 27th. I guess what I'm asking for is, that information that was promised to come up December 16th that never did come up, can I still get that information? The, the proposals, all the information from the sanitation departments? Can I, as promised, can I get that information?
What, what, I, I'm not sure I understand what information.
Okay. Basically, Mr. Carew and other members of management and council members advised, you advised, that they will evaluate the proposals and various options and hope to make a recommendation at the December 16th council meeting.
So you would like to see the bids that were open?
No, I had the bids.
Okay, well then.
I would like to see.
Well, I'll be, be this.
I would like to see. You said you will evaluate it. So can you show me what you've evaluated? The proposals, the various options? Can you show that to me as you explained you would?
Well, maybe we did evaluate it. Maybe, maybe, maybe we discussed it, we talked it over, we went over the bids, the fact sheet is on the website now. So maybe we evaluate, maybe that's what we did. What makes you think there's, there's any more documents? I'm just curious.
Uh-uh. You guys said that you would evaluate and get back to us. You did not get back to me on the 16th. No, you did not.
That's how we hoped to.
You hoped to, but you haven't.
We got back to you two weeks ago. We had a two, a two, three hour meeting on it. We discussed it in public and.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. You're wrong. You were wrong.
No, he's not.
You're wrong.
He's not wrong.
You did not discuss this at the public meetings as you said you would.
The council was not ready to discuss it.
Okay, but you gave me nothing. You didn't come into a council meeting.
You didn't give you.
You didn't come in, you, it was said, it was said in a statement, Mr. Carew stated that he would.
Mr. Lance, I got this, I got this.
Promised that something would be presented that.
Wow, 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 wow.
I get your point.
No, 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 no.
But that's not what was said.
No, I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Mr. Lance.
I'm actually.
Mr. Lance, Mr. Lance. Your opposition to this proposal is, well, no, excuse me, sir. I, I let you speak. I respect.
Well, excuse me, you're both yelling at me as I'm trying to explain something.
I'm not yelling at you. You're yelling at, you, you want to ask questions, but you don't want the answers. Okay?
No, you don't want to give the answers.
Well, I've given you the answers, you just don't want to hear them. I appreciate that. That's your reason.
Can we all take a breath?
Greg, just a second.
Yeah, I, I like that, Greg. I think that's a great idea. Let's take a breath for a second.
Thank you. You made your statement. We appreciate it. We answered your question. We're sorry it's not the question that, we're sorry it's not the answer that you want. I apologize. And I know you came here rare to go and, and I apologize that, that saving $480,000 just doesn't sit well with you. We think it was a good proposal. It passed with bipartisan support. We covered it in a meeting in early September, October, November, December 16th it was discussed. And then January 27th, just two weeks ago, we had a two hour meeting to discuss it, over two hours. The fact sheet's now on the website. Your opposition's noted, but Mr. Lance, we're not going to go back and forth and argue with you anymore.
I'm, I'm not going to argue with you. I just would like what was stated that you would give to me.
Mr. Lance, can I ask a good question?
Sure.
I'm understanding that you were not given information that you thought were promised for the December 16th.
It's not a promise. It was just a statement that we would get the information out to the public and let them know what we're going to decide to do.
Disagreements noted. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So you can.
If I had finished asking you a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I'll finish my conversation with Mr. Newcomer. Thank, thank you.
Mr. Lance, the timeline of events that went on in relation to this, I'm asking you if you understand this, this is my question.
Yeah, please.
The timeline of these events that went on, understand this, is we're not very able to give out exact information at exactly a time. Uh, the culmination of the information is on the website now.
Correct.
I don't know whether, what the research that went into, which I think is your question, and the actions that led up to that are available, or even allowed for you to see because of, you're not supposed to accrue this, but that may be the issue or the problem. I don't think anybody is looking to, for anyone or you to hide what we did or to do something, and I hope you don't see that that is what we did. I, with Mr. Jaco, attended four or five meetings, and then peppered the staff with questions, including Mr. Michelle, we gave several headaches to, about giving this. There were numerous options, five, I think, discussed. But whether we can actually, A, recreate them exactly as they were to give them to you now, or could the December sixteenth give you the amount of information it was? I don't know the answer to this, but do you understand it's a larger-than-snapshot kind of idea that we could have given you December sixteenth?
Absolutely, and, and I do, I do understand that. I guess where I'm, I'm lost is, the information I'm looking to get, or the information I want, I mean, I'm basically hearing that it's not, I'm not allowed to have, it's not public record, but yet-
What information, I, I'm just not clear what information.
Well, it, it says the various options, so the options, we never, I didn't, there was no meetings that took place from November-
So let, so let me answer that.
But, but what I'm trying to say, there's no meetings. You can't answer a question, I'm not finishing, you gotta let me finish.
You spent the last twenty minutes asking the questions, I'd like to have a answer to the answer.
What I'm trying to say is, the meetings that took place, none of this information was discussed, so you're just going around in circles, is it yes or no? Can you tell me why you didn't provide me the information, and the information, if, if, if I can't have it because it's private or what have you, you still didn't present it to the public before you voted on it, period. That's the point.
Yes, I can answer the question. Back before the bids were open, the CWA came to a meeting, and they asked the township to have an open dialogue with them to discuss the proposals after they were open. The township at that meeting agreed. Mayor Chiakio and council newcomer were picked amongst the members of council to work with me, Mr. Michelle, the labor attorney, to go through that process. Once the bid were, bids were open, we then had a meeting with the CWA. The very first thing we agreed to was a moratorium on discussing this. It became collective bargaining at that point, and we could not discuss it at a meeting. We do not discuss what we're negotiating with our bargaining units at council meetings in public. That's not how collective bargaining works. I apologize that, 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 that you seem to think that you have a right to information that's confidential, but, but you don't.
It's not about the bargaining, though. That's not really what I'm-
Exactly what it's about.
No, no, not.
All right, thanks very much, thank you, Mr. Lance, I appreciate it.
If I could just add, that moratorium was at the request of the CWA.
Yeah, they don't want us to look at it.
Because they wanted to-
But that's not even, I'm not even looking for the CWA, I have the contract. I could care less, that's not what I'm here asking for. I have the contract. Okay, that's great, that's not my-
You wanna know what you asked, what options we were looking at. We were working with them to develop the options.
No, I'm asking why you never came forward to the public and get the public views constantly. These are the guys that are not gonna be just throwing your trash, it's all of our trash. It's not only could affect you, it affects everybody.
It would be no more appropriate for, for council to do that during a course of collective bargaining negotiations than it would be for the union to conduct public hearings in this room to, to try to weigh in on collective bargaining negotiations that were on, no.
Okay, I, I, I guess, I guess my, the only other question I have real quick, Mr. Carew, is, in the information that you put, I'm sorry, Ms. Jordan, when you're done, I'll, I'll ask the question.
I had to give him some information.
Okay, when you're done, I'll ask the question. Are you done?
No, I'm not actually.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You shouldn't be sorry, but, uh-
Excuse me?
The, the thing that I don't understand, she should be sorry, not him.
She should be sorry for-
Thank you, thank you.
For Mr. Carew?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm answering a question in the middle, in the middle.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I-
No, no, you're okay.
I don't quite understand why, we're all, we're all here, we're all related with our families to help our town, you feel that's kind of a common life.
What do you think I'm doing here? You think, I'm not with my family right now.
No, you know you're not.
No, I'm not, you're right, and I shouldn't have to come to these meetings to find out information, it should be open to the public.
It is open, it's wide open, you don't want the answers, Mr. Lance.
The question I have-
You're opposed to outsourcing sanitation, you're opposed to saving four hundred eighty thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm not.
You're opposed to-
I'm not. You're misled with those statements.
You're opposed, yes, yes, you're opposed to, which we thought, this is a fourth time you're coming badgering us over the fact that you don't-
I'm not trying to badger, I'm sorry that you feel residents' concerns is badgering you. I'm sorry that you feel that way. No, no, I really don't. I, I just have a quick question, and I'll sit down for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The money that you're saying, the base salaries in your two thousand thirteen sanitation cost breakdown, base salaries, is that just an average?
Of what you're using? The sixty thousand? Because we know every guy doesn't make sixty thousand, correct?
What, what number are you looking at?
At, in the, in the two thousand thirteen sanitation cost breakdown, it says personal, based on eleven employees' budget for two thousand thirteen.
There's a total there, and then it's averaged out, so you're right, it's an average.
So it's out, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Betty Sanders, five nineteen North Church Street. First of all, I'm sorry the, the lady left, her family has lived here a long time, and so has mine. Talking about services and the decline of the town, but I'm not here, I'm not gonna even get into that, she's not here, I wanted to thank her. This that I've just been seeing in the last meeting is a perfect reason why all of these things need to be recorded, okay? You sit there, well, I didn't see that, well, we didn't do, you know, we need to have this service, and it's my understanding that Comcast has allocated funds for us to have, tape these things to be on television, on, on, uh, public access TV. And I wanna know why not? Now, you're all pumping yourselves, and you're all just so a Twitter over this new town hall. Are all of our meetings gonna be telecast? That's what I, that's the first thing I need to know, and if not, why, okay? Because, you know, there's all of this confusion, and then you guys wanna put it on the citizens, well, you misunderstood, well, you don't know. Well, you know what, if we got videotaped, we can go right back to it. Right back to it.
Two, to answer your question, ma'am. One, um, every meeting is recorded, we're being recorded right now.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hunt has the recordings. Two, the answer to your other question is yes, the new town hall will have the capability to videotape. I believe we'll have it drop. Uh, we haven't figured out exactly how we're going to have those tapes of the meetings. It's gonna be live, it's gonna be taped, but yes, the meetings will be videotaped, whether it's put on YouTube, or our own website, or however we decide to do it, it will be available for the public.
You know, may I recommend that you, you know, spend a little more time on that than you are on the colors of letters on the side of the building? Because that's a little bit more important.
What, what?
And so, and so, and so, I'm, you know, I, I'm, I'm just over this right now, you know, I mean, as people come up, you know, you wanna challenge, and you wanna tell people what their mission with coming to this meeting was to, you know, I mean, right now, you're looking like a Christie clone to me, okay? You're being, I'm not done. You're being very bullying, you're bullying, and you know, you're trying to tell me, and I, I have, I have a problem, I have a real problem. And, you know, the young lady you just gave the cit, whatever the random acts of kindness, I, I recommend that you be one of the first ones that really studies that, because I notice how you deal with people that don't agree with you, and do not rubber stamp you. You know, I've seen your side, and it's very unpleasant, and it's bad enough I have to see it with the governor. I've lived here since nineteen fifty-five, I do not wanna see it here, okay? I don't wanna see all that attitude, and, you know, talking over people, that just doesn't need to happen. You know, I remember this town, and my family's paid taxes here since nineteen twenty-six, so I have some skin in the game. And do not appreciate this, you know, nobody knows anything. So yes, it's recorded, but you know what, I'd like to sit home and watch it on public access TV, like some of the other towns, and we set ourselves so high above because we're Moorestown, but they can get it on public access, so, I'm done.
Betty Sanders, I'd be happy to talk with you about that anytime, and as I've emailed you before, be happy to discuss with either of those things with you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a statement from his land?
Yeah, yeah.
Just so you know, he's asking about the options that we talked about. At the time, we couldn't bring them to the public because we were in collective bargaining, but I wanted to let him know some of the options that we were talking about. It was laying off all those people, it was keeping all the people there in the jobs, and, and keeping them as part of our public works, or it was a combination of that. So just so you know, it's like, it wasn't, those were the options we were dealing with. We couldn't put, we couldn't publicly tell and talk about it because of the collective bargaining that was going on at the time. I don't know if that helped, that's what I was talking to Mr. Carew about, trying to see if that was something that we could come out and, and let you know, but that's-
No, I, I appreciate that, and, and I guess it's, it's more or less, I'm thinking, when I look at the numbers, I see a lot of numbers, I see a lot of missed job misplacements in work, public works departments, I see an acting director acting for ten years. I see a lot of issues in the department itself, so my thought right away is, let's fix the problem and see where our numbers are, instead of looking at outsourcing, and that's-
Well, outsourcing is part of the solution that we're looking at with fewerizing our public networks.
Right, and that's what the claim is, but yet, can't, can't seem to put it together. I can't, and, and I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand this.
We were, we were hard, 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 making sure that, that was a priority of the council, that we didn't wanna put families that have lived and worked in Moorestown out on the street.
And I'm sure they, I'm sure that they appreciate that.
And those are the options that we had to look at, so I just wanted to let you know that there, those were the options, and then in between, those two, you know, laying off all the people or keeping them, and that, and then all, everything in between.
And, and I understand that, it just, it still makes, I just don't get it. I just don't, I don't see it. I'm trying to understand it, and I, I just can't, I'm really, really trying, so please be patient with me.
Come in and, and sit down with Mr. Michelle, and go over the numbers, he can actually go over the numbers with you to let you see. I know he's been up for a couple members in the audience already, and, and then you can maybe get a better handle on it.
Thank you.
Up, from eight one twenty-three, West Drive. Several months ago, council passed a resolution urging an RFP, who were an insurance broker, and it said that, that an insurance broker could save us lots of money with negotiations, et cetera. What happened with that RFP?
I think it was our Q, we issued.
And we did not, we did not change brokers.
It did change.
But why, if they're gonna save so much money?
We still wanted to address it.
You've only one broker, if I remember correctly, and that's our current broker.
No, that was, that was three. We, we, we stuck with, with, um, our last, we stuck with our current broker, the, what, between the fact that contracts, collective bargaining contracts ended December of two thousand thirteen, we're in negotiations with both the FPA and CWA for new contracts now. Part of those contracts will be the healthcare benefits. We have identified with the CWA, Marie Pong, through the MOA, certain things that will be in the CWA contract, but we certainly haven't finished the negotiations. And once again, same issue as with what we were talking about with Mr. Lance's sanitation, it is collective bargaining. We're not gonna, uh, we're not going to talk about, um, the possible options we're negotiating with these bargaining groups right now. The question of when you'll see the results of that will be when the bargaining agreements are done, when the contracts are ratified.
Hasn't that RFP expired? You went out for them, you put everybody through the process, staff had to prepare them and advertise them, you got responses from at least three, um, different insurance companies. And now, were they just ignored, or?
No, it's not a situation.
As I said at the beginning of this part of the conversation, we decided to stay with our current broker.
Was that, was that communicated to anybody?
Yes, what?
I don't, it goes to communications, you have the meeting, you do the RFP, and if somebody doesn't get up when they ask a question, they don't know that that was tabled.
Nothing was tabled, we decided to stay with our-
Who decided it? It wasn't decided at any meeting?
I, I'm not sure I follow what you're saying, Mr. Lance.
The decision was made, based on what you're saying, to not go through with the RFP, not select one of the people that put up-
Not, not change brokers.
Who made that decision?
There was no, we, we began our, our contract with Lance Broker, and we backed in June, July, um, with the date, two thirty to, or July first. We chose not to change our broker. No decision had to be made, no action had to be made to not change our broker in the middle of their contract.
I think what you're trying to say is, the manager, the executive, we made recommendations, we, we had a subcommittee to make a recommendation, the manager, we kept our, the, the broker.
That's my question, why wouldn't that be communicated? It, it was communicated that you went out and talked.
Then, Bob, I, I, I thought it was, if you're saying it was, I, I guess we'd have gone back to you.
We're always confused, if you, you did it in July, and you selected a new person, and then a couple months later-
No, we didn't select a new person, we had the same broker.
We selected that person in July, you awarded it, you awarded it, and then all of a sudden, you're sent, you're up here espousing how much you're gonna save.
There was no bid back in July, but we just renewed the contract with, with the current broker.
You renewed it, and then you hit him up here and talked about how much more savings you could have with this new one, and about how all the same-
No, maybe some of, what, what we said was, with, with everything that we did, was try and identify areas where we could save money. But that was an area we investigated, decided not to make change.
Okay, and you referenced, um, the gentleman mentioned, um, the acting director of Public Works for ten years. Can, can you just give us a nation as to why we have an acting director for ten years?
To be perfectly honest with you, Bob, it was something that I inherited, and I haven't spent the time to, um, make a change, because I haven't seen the need to make change.
Is it allowed under civil service? Have somebody asking that at home? Even if somebody's interested in the position?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
If somebody's interested in that position, they don't have a chance to put in for it?
Uh, if it's not a position we're advertising for, then no.
Okay, it seems unfortunate that you have a director that, another term was used earlier, skin in the game. If you're gonna be a director, you should be a director, if you're gonna be in a union, you should be in a union. You shouldn't have the best of both worlds, in my opinion.
He's not a union.
But he has a bump act right, being, he's only acting. What does he have then?
Mr. Ubers is, is actually occupying two positions. He was the assistant director time react, and this goes back a long time ago. He stepped up into the role, filled both positions, been able to play some of his active, but neither one of the positions was ever in the, uh, CWA or the supervisor. They're not part of, just like Bill Buffer, as the utility superintendent, is also not a member of the union. Part of management.
He has both rights for it?
Well, he does have, what he does have is civil service protection in his former position, but that's not part of the union. Civil service, as you know, is a separate group from the unionized section.
It just seems to me that it's all, it's all because of having an acting director for ten years. In reference to management, a clear, especially, and that gets confusing also for budgets, when you, we, it's already confusing when you have people in sanitation being budget, well, budget and sanitation are working elsewhere.
Well, and that's also a conclusion I inherited, that, that we're fixing with, with our reorganization department.
That'll be fixed as part of the review?
Well, there will be no more sanitation division, so those two people will not occupy the sanitation anymore.
Manique, that two zero nine Perry Drive. Um, I thought much of the confusion about this arose at the last meeting, because initially, you had it listed as a consent agenda resolution which requires no discussion. So I don't think you meant to have a public hearing on it, but the public was here, so you were, you granted us the public-
That's not true.
A hearing, in a way, but it was a consent agenda resolution that requires no discussion, according to the agenda, which you always put.
It's a good, it's a great point you bring up, uh, and you were, you're concerned about the process. We, we never, we always intend to discuss it. Wording contracts typically goes in the consent agenda, but that, that was, that agenda was posted on the internet the Friday before, so certainly there was no attempt to hide something that's, you know, posted and you get copies of it. We always had intended on discussing it, and if that caused concern with you, then I, then we-
Because, and a consent agenda resolution, usually by definition, your own definition, does not require-
Sometimes do, and we, and we would have won that, that definitely would have been discussed. That's, when we word contracts, they typically go there, but we, we had, we had planned on discussing it, and, and that's why it was, you know, it was posted on the internet on Friday, the Friday before. It's a public agenda, you know, it, it, we, we definitely wanted to get it out there and have discussion on it.
Thank you.
Further residents?
Michael Babcock, one eight nine Highland Avenue.
Sir, yes.
Just like to thank Mr. Carew, him and I have been emailing back and forth, because I had a couple questions, and he's given me a lot of answers to my questions, but this question is, um, probably just for Mr. Michelle and the council. I'm trying to understand the actual four hundred seventy-seven thousand dollar savings, and what by the council, council definition is, is exactly, definition of savings. Is savings spending less this upcoming year than will be spent last year? Like if I bought, I don't know, a ball for ten dollars yesterday, and I bought a ball for nine dollars today, I saved a dollar. But if we're spending the same amount of money in actuality this year, as we did last year, by definition, I don't see that as savings. And I, I had a conversation with Mr. Carew, where he, um, he pointed out that, uh, with contract negotiations, there are gonna be savings as far as with the, with the union, but he had also emailed me that packet that- that he sent out just recently, I guess the whole packet of all the information. All these calculations are done according to and based on the budget of last year, not the actual payroll, what was actually paid out by the township. Is that typically how you do those calculations?
Yeah, and that was, that, I was hoping that you still have the time to come in to get into a more depth conversation with Mr. Michelle. But Tom, if you don't mind, I'm gonna.
Yes, it's, it's a little different than what the private sector would be. We obviously fix our budget at a certain time period. That's when taxes are going to be raised based upon that. The budget starts with the directors sending in the request. And it's for, in this instance, specific manpower. We would have 11 people on sanitation, for instance. That's assuming that they're all going to be there during that time. Whenever you run any large operation, including the police or the public works or any of the staff, things occur during the year. People retire. So to use round numbers, if you budgeted $600,000, you're going to retire by the time you're out of time, you're going to lose six months. So next year, so you know, you had budgeted $600,000, then you're going to spend $550,000. Well, your budget next year is going to be $600 plus at the time for court money. It doesn't go back to $550,000. Same thing happens in, in public works. It's a high-risk area. Guys get injured, they go on workers' comp. When they want workers' compensation, they're paid, they're paid by a third party. They're still on our books. They're still employees at the township, but their pay is actually being paid by a third-party administrator. So that's the safety of the township. But he's still employed. When he comes back on work status, he's going to go back to his normal pay. And there's constantly thinking that also disciplinary action or if a employee is terminated, there's always been savings from an initial $600 value during that year. You're going to spend less. And it's a salary line. You may, you may spend more in other areas, such as overtime, but probably that is a salary line. I don't, you're going to see, you're going to spend less. But you know, upon next year's budget, you're expecting the whole other guys going to be working, working place, whatever the new, that you know, if you hire somebody in December, you know, you're going to be hiring at a lower salary and it's going to start to pay. And that's why it's not going to happen. Because there's so many things that occur during the year from when that budget was set. They, you know, just happen to store in normal course. Every single town has a large collection of boards.
And I think, that's one of the things is, is, I, I understand your, your curiosity about that. But when we look at, at savings and when the budget is adopted, and you know, you and I had a little bit of a conversation about the revenue side and the appropriation side. The revenue side is, is set for the year. And that includes the, like Tom said, the amount we raise by taxes. If anything does happen subsequent to the budget being adopted, in this case where positions become open and they're not filled till the end of the year, as, as we talked about, that savings, the money not spent that was budgeted last surplus, it doesn't impact that budget in terms of when we go back retroactively and, and adjust the budget because we didn't spend as much. So the budget, the adopted budget is the baseline to look at subsequent year, the next year's budget in terms of, of, you know, either increases or decreases, savings or, or not. When Tom does do the budget, I mean, he does provide me and subsequently council with numbers to show, you know, actual spending. So when we do the budget, and then we were just working on this today, if, if a department wants to budget $30,000 for widgets, and I can look and see, well, it was $30,000 that year. Budget, however, they only spent $23,000. And the year before that, they only spent $24,000. And the year before that, $19,000. Then I know that, okay, you know what? We can afford to lower the amount raised. The savings is from the budget of 30, which is what we raised, to whatever the new number is. But it's budget for budget, not spending to subsequent budget.
With the document.
In relation, you asked for comments from the council as well.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Totally, totally uninvolved with the numbers, although commented on it in the notes on regards to savings. I calculated some savings that we had because I used to be in charge of three to sixteen trucks from another place. And then the fuel, we're saving $50,000 a year by not having a sanitation department.
I'm sorry, Greg, if, if I could just really quick, because I didn't add that to the public, the published savings. And, and there is a reason for that because, yes, there won't be sanitation trucks on the road, but those employees who were driving sanitation trucks will now be driving other trucks. We do anticipate savings because they're not going up to the landfill. There's, we expect less time and less gas spent. But I didn't want to identify as cost savings because it's really, until we get through that first year with the guys now in other divisions, I don't want to.
You're not really going to know for sure.
Exactly.
But notwithstanding that from, notwithstanding that from the direct calculation, $50,000 in fuel, $40,000 in maintenance, and then truck replacement costs, which we have to direct for that sanitation unit, which is a tough use of the truck, very specialized trucks. You have to lock, basically, if you're accruing the cost, $94,000 a year. You have a business, you have to replace a truck. $94,000 a year for a special truck. And I came to $184,000 just for those three items, which aren't even in the calculation for $184,000.
And also, Mr. Carew, you had sent me, could I question about the, the six positions that were vacated during the course of the year? And I asked, when were they vacated and what, and where? And you gave me that. Two of the positions were actually vacated in 2012.
Correct.
Why would, I'm just curious, why would the township, are, are they non-essential jobs that just could be kind of swallowed up by everyone else? They just did the jobs all this time? Why were they not filled at the end of 2012 and then budgeted for again in 2013?
And Tony, just jumped out in case, I, I say, think I'm not supposed to say here. One, one of those two employees was out on duty injury.
Okay.
And he, he, there was, we didn't want to completely shut the door on his return until we knew for sure. The other position, it's like I told you in my response, it wasn't, it wasn't feeling, at least on my part, certainly on Mr. Uwes' part, these positions were not necessary. It was just an anticipation of, you know, when we entered this year, we decided the budget, we knew that those positions were positions that we wanted to have. We wanted council to fund for last year. And then when we began the cost savings initiative, the idea of, of going through the process of hiring, you know, the search, the advertising of the search, hiring two guys to fill those positions, and then just having to lay them off because the way the union works, you know, last in, first out, if we did end up laying people off. So it, it's, the positions are valuable. That's why they were funded last year. That's why they're being filled now.
Okay. It just seems that you have that many positions that happen to be open at the end of the year. And I know the whole outsourcing of the sanitation, that it just kind of seemed, all right, we had this many positions kind of just open and we just happened to have this many guys to slide over. And the decision to outsource the sanitation really, from what I understand, really wasn't made till November. But these positions were left open, has started being left open since the year before.
We, we had a long discussion about this.
Well, I was just, well, I didn't hear, that's, that's why, I didn't hear the discussion. That, that's why I'm asking the question. And I didn't realize if a person was out on disability, they can kind of held that spot for the term of whenever they may or may not come back. So now.
I, I'm not sure if you misunderstand. This wasn't just a decision that was made in November. This is something that had been talked about in 2012 and in, and into, you know, with Scott, that he can now, that we want to reorganize things. So there's, there's been a lot of work that Scott has done before this. So it wasn't just something that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand. I think you put it out in bid, like in October and November. So I think that you said that discussions were really starting to.
At least a year, at least a year.
Okay. So it's understandable that this stuff is hard to digest because we took a lot of study to get to the point where we understand this, et cetera. And it's, the information changed all the way along the way until we got to a good conclusion.
Well, I think a lot of the issue too, there's a lot of information, misinformation. There was an $800,000 savings, a $700,000, and a $500,000 savings when we got here. Contract was $600,000. And when we got here, it was $425,000. So.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
There's, you can understand why people are a little bit confused. And then there really wasn't a whole lot of information out there for people to really put pen to paper and actually do some math.
I have an interesting spec about. $80,000 was to grow savings. But you're right, there were a lot of different numbers floating around. And it definitely isn't something that the average person can look at and, you know, it's definitely something that takes work.
Yeah, well, they definitely couldn't look at it if you didn't really have all the information as well. And I think someone had asked, the, the contract is finalized with Casworth and it's, it's signed, I guess, right? And it's, it's a public document. It shouldn't be by now? Is this, is it something that could be, I'm just curious. No?
The, what council did at the last meeting was authorize entering the contract. The contract has not been signed yet.
So, okay. I, I was just, because at the last meeting, it seemed like imperative that got passed because basically the next day.
And it's because when you open up, I'm sorry, Chris, when you open up other bids, you have 60 days to act on those bids. And I think that's one of the things Mr. Morris was talking about would be with the healthcare broker RFQ. We were able to get an extension from the low bidder, which is, it's something we've done before. When, when we had the contractor who was a little bit around the turf field, it was like eight months after the bid opening because council took that long to decide if to go ahead. So as long as you could get an extension in writing from the lowest responsible bidder, then you can go beyond that 60 days. And so we, we, at the last council meeting, the next day, that Tuesday, was when that bid would expire.
Okay. And when, when would that actually be available? Or is it not?
Well.
The actual contract? So just to see what's included. I'm just curious because I know it's a three-year contract and based on just my own research.
What you can look at now is you can look at the bid specs, which the contract will mimic exactly what the bid specs say. And Tony, for example, maybe, I don't know what it could be much difference between the bid specifications and the contract itself. But the bid specifications do spell out, I mean, it's, it's an inch and a half, so it's actually, you're welcome to look at this.
Okay. Well.
Once the contract's signed, you're welcome. It's, it's a public document. You're welcome.
Yeah, could I, just doing my own research in other towns, I know it seems like a lot of towns have outsourced. But a lot of towns are having a lot of issues as far as, I guess there's a certain type of containers. Eventually, they start making people have, actually a friend of mine's a municipal attorney telling me that somebody he represented in their town, they have certain trash bags they got to buy to have to have a township logo. Not, not the word there.
You know, our bid specs were written specifically to mimic exactly what the residents have now.
And is that what we're going to continue to try to maintain?
Yes, absolutely.
Get another guy.
And so, and I think we said at the last meeting, the only thing that could potentially change from the residents' perspective would be when the trash gets picked up. But that will, and since that last meeting, have met with, with the owner of Casworth, he's going to try his best to stick to exactly the same day. So if you used to have your trash picked up at 8:00 in the morning, maybe it'll be 11:00 in the morning. But other than that, if you put out a couch now and it gets picked up, you'll be able to put out a couch later, you know, after they're in and have it picked up. There won't be any change. We could make sure grass is picked up. I'm sorry. But everything that's picked up now by sanitation will continue to be picked up.
And speaking of, you mentioned with the owner of Casworth, that's another thing too, that I found it kind of odd. Obviously, doing this outsourcing is probably a huge step for, for this town or for a lot of people. It's like, ooh, we're outsourcing. They're freaking out about it. I would think a contract like that, especially with this company, I was kind of, kind of surprised that there wasn't a representative here from that company because a lot of people actually had a lot of questions about the type of people that they hire, how do they vet people and things like that. And then realistically, even asking you guys for that information, you don't know. It's not your company. I think it probably would have been better if someone actually representative of the company was here to actually answer those questions for their own behalf. And maybe that's something that still could be done because I, I feel like, I know, I have a couple of questions. And I know the gentleman, one gentleman last week, and I kind of shared his thoughts. Well, what kind of people do you hire? Do you pick guys up at Labor Ready? I mean, I, I know, I own my own business. I know a lot of people in business. I know large companies have business. They, they just go to Labor Ready and pick up whatever bodies they got. They don't know anything about them. They just show up at two arms. So is that, is that what we're going to have for people riding on the back of these trucks going through town or, or not? And like the other gentleman said, is there stipulation in the contract to prevent?
I'm sure they take the same approach to hiring employees as any company does. I mean, it's a reputation. They've been in business for 32 years. I was concerned about it as well before we started this process. But we, we sat down with Mr. Casworth and he laid our concerns regarding his workforce. He, he goes through the same standards that any company does, hiring their, their employees. And, you know, these guys' reputation do uphold. And, you know, he's, they have 15 towns now. We wouldn't have that, we'd lose them all if our employees were, were problems.
I, I can understand that. But one way to squash all concerns is actually having a provision in the contract that states that, which then, then it's not, then it's not really an arguable point. And then the gentleman I know that was standing up there last week really giving you a hard time, then you wouldn't have any argument. Hey, we put it in there if it's a problem.
It would have been better if you let someone else hear. That's correct.
And then you, you brought up a, a real good idea. And unless, unless Tony thinks there's any reason why we couldn't do this. But I, I, I can talk to them about, I think rather than having them come to a council meeting where there's tons of other business to, to maybe set up. Now, we did the rebound a year and a half ago. Tom and I went and did a bunch of town hall meetings, different sections of town to have people come out, ask questions. I, I, I don't want to make a promise because I have to, you know, get him to come out. There's nothing in our bid specifications that said he had to do this. But I can certainly ask them to take the time and maybe we can set up one or two meetings in the town to have him come and answer questions.
Well, from a council standpoint, that would definitely cushion the blow of actually doing this. And from the standpoint, as a businessperson like himself, if he wants to have a contract next year, you always want to please the customer. If he came out and actually answered the questions and made people feel better about the whole outsourcing to, to his company, I think maybe people would.
That's a great, that's a very positive process idea. Great idea.
Okay.
Fine.
Yep, okay. I think this will include dash 2014, a resolution authorizing renewed participation in the master interlocal agreement with the Earlton County Board of Chosen Preholders in connection with the integrated law enforcement computer project and authorizing execution of an amendment. 68-2014 is appointing Neil Johnson to the appearance committee. 69-2014 is appointing Joseph McGuire to the zoning board adjustment. 70-2014 is authorizing the tax collector to cancel property taxes for the 2014 preliminary pursuant to major subdivision. And 71-2014 is authorizing the tax collector to refund tax overpayment.
Okay. Open for the public comment on consent agenda items. Saying that applies that. And now is council for any comment or motion to adopt?
Do you have two dots?
Second.
And you go forward.
Mr. Newcomer?
Yes.
And it's Napolitano?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Dan Gia.
Yes. Thank you. Now, leaving two minutes. We have two sets, January 6th and the December 16th. Council, any comment or take a motion to adopt? The minutes.
Counsel, one, 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 December 16th minutes, one comment under, under reports from Captain Mr. Knowledge of Death and accomplishments of others. He made, he made an earmark of his life. I believe should read, he made reconciliation, an hallmark of his life or earmark of his life. You're one. Reconciliation. How many comments I have on that?
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Ask for motion to, for minutes?
Second. That's amended.
I amended, I'm sorry, I amended.
Mr. Newcomer?
Yes.
Mr. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Jordan?
We know what you meant.
And Mayor, do you have yours?
Uh, yes. Provo expenditures are our done. Scott, new business or old business?
Uh, nothing for today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then we'll go to closing comments from members of the public on any item listed on the agenda.
Adam Beg, 209 Perry Drive. Four quick items. Last week, number one, I was able to connect. Last week, number one, I was able to connect two actions. Paying for, as I was at my desk at home, writing a check for my quarterly tax payment. And lo and behold, a receipt for service as a township stove plow truck went in front of my house. I am a happy, satisfied service receiver. Number two, I just wonder the discussion, we don't need to provide more service to this account. And here, I'll represent the old curmudgeon contingent. And that is the discussion of shoveling school bus stop stops. Growing up, small town, mid Hudson Valley, the weather here, believe me, is semi-tropical. In my 12 years of schooling, there was never a school, a school closing day, a snow day. I was in the middle of essentially two schools. One roughly about a mile away was a Catholic school. To the, to the northwest, walked every day, never in consideration of school buses, so I always walked, every day. One mile roughly to the southeast was a high school, a public high school. And I lived on the wrong side of the creek, which was a separator between you get a bus, you get the school bus or you don't. So I walked 12 years in the snow, every school day. So please give me a break that we gotta, you know, are we raising babies or are we raising Superman? Number three, Mr. Chiakio is the fourth mayor. Mr. Carew is the third township manager. We're the subject in the process of what to do with, at that time, a burned out, not a burned out, but a fired-out town, town hall. What are we going to do? And at one point early, going back two or three, three or four mayors ago, was the question, are we going to rehab the building or new build? That was the time to raise the question of, you know, what are our priorities, a new town hall or school? Number four, on the subject of twittering and all the little electronic devices, tap, tap, tap away. I think that is legitimate concern, and maybe, if not said already, maybe one day it's an Supreme Court issue. But there is a legitimate concern that someone is tweeting back and forth that is germane to what's going on in a council meeting. So I'm not raising the question of whether or not there was any legitimate twittering or not the last meeting. But I think that is worthy of consideration. Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll speak to Mr. Page, Mr. Jordan. I have small children, so I frequently keep in touch with my wife about them, things they have going on, colds, whatever. I will always do that, here, sitting here, wherever I am. But it's a good point, and if I want to speak to Mr. Newcomer or another council member, I'll either speak to him.
No, again, I'm only talking about part of the agenda, not, not personal business.
Absolutely, I'm explaining to you, that's all, yes.
Mr. Bag, you made me think of something. I actually was using electronic devices, I always do, but I could never Twitter because I could never get my fingers well with Twitter. I was using an iPad. And I always do that to take notes of people who are speaking to the public, but I, I did use that during the meeting. But I, I know Twitter back and forth myself, but it's a good point.
Or we'll get the NSA after you report back on what you've done.
Okay, Mr. Bag. You're supposed to go on top.
Any further members of the public that can make closing comment? No? Comment? Okay, closing comments by council. We'll start with Mr. Newcomer.
Well, I, I just have a couple of comments just to bring to the council, but I can get to my, and it's more to how to proceed. There's no need to answer these questions, but I'm trying to figure out a couple of things. I was called by a resident regarding the David Gentile memorial, who talked to me for quite some time about the possibility with it. I assume a good place to go to that would be to go to recreation, but I don't know that. Also, we had talked about for several years now the decorations on Main Street, which relate to the finishing of the decorations for Christmas, but also in this, a discovery of the new lighting for town hall, we looked at this year decorations that may go on to the town hall lights. I'm assuming that it would be good to go back to appearance and ask them for recommendations for both together because that would be cost-effective for one thing. And since we are looking at these things at this time, this year, and I'm the liaison to appearance, I intend to go, go do that unless there's an objection from the council.
If I can, before you put it in there, I mean, the recommendation from the appearance committee for the remainder of the streetlights, I think is, I guess, just to finish what's been started.
Yeah, $14,000.
Right. As for, as for the town hall lights, we have confirmed that the ability is.